Hussey. All right, welcome everybody to the budget meeting Thursday, August 18th. I'll call this meeting in order and we will begin with real call.
Branch?
Here.
Costalis?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey, Mahalovich, Prather?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Here.
All right, thank you. This time, what we're going to do is move into the parking lot and all the items have been added and go one by one from the top to the bottom as they were put on the parking lot. And if we have the offsetting expenses and it could grip on them, well, so be it. If not, they'll probably come off the parking lot at the end of the night. Now, should anybody wish to add further things to the parking lot tonight, that's fine. You can come up with an offsetting amount tonight or we can have another meeting. I'll leave it up to the council for that. So at this time, we will move into the internship program that was added for $27,558. And unfortunately, Councilman Mahalovich is on vacation and cannot be here to give an offset. I didn't know if he's talked to anybody for that. Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes, I think this is something that Councilman Hussey might want to discuss, so if we could wait until he gets here.
Okay, that's fine. We'll come back to that.
Okay.
All right. Next item is the emergency notification system. And at this time, I will take any offsets of that. Councilman Graham?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you for recognizing me. I've had several conversations with a couple of people in regards to this emergency notification system and I was sharing what all it does, but at this time, for the record, I'm going to ask Chief Schrader if he would, tell us more about this emergency notification system. And then I do have a couple of questions for Chief. And then I do plan on offsetting this $26,000 throughout our budget sheet. So at this time, I'm going to call on Chief Schrader to give us a little bit more information about this emergency notification system.
Thank you, Councilman. The, first of all, as far as the $26,000, that is an annual expense. There is no maintenance fee because that's all-inclusive in that figure. Now, it's not quite that expensive because we're pretty confident the county, Cole County has indicated a desire to participate, to be a part of that program. And so I think they would, I don't want to speak for them, but there's been an indication that they would very gladly pay a share of that expense. Additionally, although I haven't had discussions with the directors, that expense could be shared by all the multiple departments within the city, that would be a part of that notification system. It is a web-based mass notification system. The way I understand it, there would be like a super user, which might be the police department, it could be IT, but they basically manage that whole system. Any government entity within the city could use that. So every department in the city could use it to make notifications. Now, although it may be primarily designed or used for police-related matters or emergencies, severe weather, that type of thing, it really has a limited use in that Parks and Rec could use it to notify the constituency of events that are coming. Fire Department could utilize it. Anybody that wanted to participate could utilize that system for notifications. I'm told it's like Facebook, Twitter, emails, landlines, all of that is included as far as the mechanism to deliver the message. Let's see, related to that is, what was I going to say? Anyway, and I have Captain Willie here to help me with explaining all those things that you might want to know or need to know. The constraints are basically self-imposed, as I said. It's pretty wide open of what we can do with that. Oh, I know what it was. As far as how do we use it, any resident within the city subscribes. And the city or multiple government entities pay for it. So there's no cost to anyone, to any resident, for utilization of that system. They simply subscribe, basically sign up for it, and then whatever, as I indicated that long list, no matter what mechanism they have to receive those messages, those messages are transmitted to those. So it really is, and I might add, unfortunately, many central Missouri cities, counties are using that, and so we're kind of in a catch-up mode. We think it's very, very important and we'd be happy to answer questions.
Councilman Graham?
Captain Willie, is there anything you would like to add to that? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since Chief called your name, I figure it's okay.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for letting me weigh in, but I think one of the biggest challenges we face as far as emergency notifications in Cole County and the Jeff City area is our outdoor warning sirens are designed to do one thing, and that's to notify people that are outside of a pending weather emergency. What this would do would give us another opportunity to broadcast things as far as crime alerts, or if there's an incident in the community that needs to be brought to people's attention, that are inside of an office building, inside of their home. It gives another avenue to make those emergency notifications to them for things that we want to get out. Right now, our two mechanisms for making emergency notifications to the community are, again, weather-related through the warning sirens, and second, through media releases, which takes time, and we're kind of at the mercy of the media to get that out. Not that they don't do it, but we could immediately put messages out to the community for crime events, road closures. As the Chief mentioned, if other departments within the city wanted to use it for things like water main breaks, Parks and Rec announcements, it's configurable where you can use it across all government entities to use it as a, I wouldn't call it necessarily an emergency notification, it's mass notification. It's putting messages out to the community that you feel as a department head is important.
I just had a question for you. Chief had mentioned that it was an annual $26,000, so this isn't a one-time thing. This is ongoing forever, $26,000?
This is an ongoing expense. We don't pay any sort of maintenance fees or anything. And $26,000 is an average cost of the several systems that I've looked at. Some are cheaper, some are a little more expensive, but it's all based upon population. Now, whenever I got the quotes for this, I based it on the population for Cole County because I was anticipating we would want to do this countywide, but it would be a little bit cheaper if we just did it for Jefferson City. But looking at what's going on around the communities around us, Boone County is using it as a county, a county system, Callaway County's using it, Osage County's using it. It's usually used at the countywide, countywide stance. And for us, we would get a lot of use of it from our 911 system. So that's essentially all those notifications out of our 911 center. That's why we felt bringing it from the 911 arena forward for those emergency notifications would be important and providing that for the county community. But I wanted to show you the best bang for the buck, knowing that we can use, other departments can use it as well for their mass notification purposes.
Chief?
Yes, I think it's important to note too, Captain's mic works better than mine, but it's important to note that we have been researching this for many years, and then the funding issue of 2013 kind of interfered with our progress. The good aspect of that is if those types of systems five years ago were much more expensive and much more limited than what Captain Willie has identified today. So, you know, we've waited a little longer, but I think he's done an excellent job of finding, as he said, the biggest bang for our buck. We really believe that.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes, thank you. You had indicated that there were possibly across governmental use, you could use this system for across governmental use. Is that an increased cost, or is it a decreased cost if we only use it for emergency or weather issues, or is it the same price no matter what?
It's the same price and we configure it to how we want it as a government entity. There are also internal notification capabilities embedded into these, so as a governing body, if you wanted to set up your own talk group, you know, if there's an emergency, and if you wanted to be able to get a message from the 911 center that just goes out to the council or just goes out to department directors, it's configurable to do that and it's all one cost.
Councilman?
Chief, while ago, you said that although you hadn't talked to them, there was a good probability maybe the county might participate, but I guess that would be pretty much contingent upon if we included the county in with the city rather than just the city alone. What would you say there?
I want to make sure I understand the question. What is dependent upon that?
Upon, dependent upon us also including the county, all the residents of the county, not just the citizens of Jefferson City in the notification system. So probably the county's participation, if they would be willing to give a percentage, would be based on us including all the residents of the county, wouldn't, would you say that's correct, or?
In terms of the expense or how that would be divided?
Yeah, of paying their portion or a share of that expense.
Of course, that's negotiable, but the price was identified in all-inclusive of the 70-some thousand residents of the county. $26,000 would ensure that if everybody wanted to participate, they could. I believe there were discussions previously with certain county officials, and certainly Bill Farr, the Emergency Management Director, is 100% behind this. Again, inappropriate to speak for the governing body, but there's legitimate support. They recognize in Cole County government how important this message delivery system is.
Okay, thank you.
Adding to Councilman Schreiber's, would you say that they would be willing to participate financially, potentially in the future, or is this something we just give to them for free?
I don't know, I guess I'm uncomfortable going down this road because I don't want to portray it like we're committing them to anything. I'm saying that there was discussions and that certain people to include Bill Farr were very supportive of it. And considering the willingness that they've shown in the past to work with us and share expense in the 911 center, then I think it's a legitimate expectation, or at least we can legitimately discuss that matter with the governing body, and I think they'd be open to at least listening. And I think maybe we have time to do that in the next few weeks. If there was a desire for a more firm commitment, I don't think it would take long to determine what that level of commitment is.
Thank you. Councilman Graham?
Mr. Chairman, I guess for the discussion of this evening, I would just like for us to focus on the city of Jefferson and not talk about Cole County and what they may or may not do. So I would just really like to focus on the $26,000. And if the county decides to come aboard, then that's more the merrier than we can talk about the cost at that point. I don't think we should talk about is the county going to be a part of this, is it 13 they were looking for? I just really want to focus on the $26,000. And Captain Willie, I was so glad that you pointed out because a lot of residents thinks that the outdoor sirens are for them to hear inside of their home. And certainly, that is not the case whatsoever. And so I do have another question for you. Do you think that this system could help save lives?
Well, I think the potential is always there. When seconds and minutes count, if you get someone the right notification and they're inside of their home in a severe storm or a flash flood or a tornado is bearing down on them and they don't hear the outdoor warning sirens, then yes, I believe it would. I mean, we're really at the mercy of Mother Nature, but what I would, it's my goal not to just make it a weather warning system. There are plenty of other opportunities for us to put information out to the public related to public safety events in addition to other things that just makes their life more convenient should they have the knowledge and the information at their hands. And the way these systems generally work is one user set up at each department, however we want to configure it, would develop that message. And once you hit the send button, it goes to every subscriber. So anyone who logs on and subscribes would get the information that they want, not just anything. They can sign up for weather alerts or they can sign up for soccer announcements, they can sign up for what they want. They're not going to get the full push of all the data and it won't be a burden on them. But what it does is put the right information into their hands, the information that they want to help their lives be more convenient and safe.
If I might add, I think that was the purpose from the origin of the development of this was to save lives. I mean, that's why it's there. That was the reason those companies developed those things as a direct answer, absolutely. And then, for instance, another example, and there are many hazardous material spill, things like that, when it comes to mass notification, it could be anything that affects all or part of the city.
And I was hoping to hear that, and when I read, I was thinking the same thing, but you know, I just hope that we seriously look at this after I put out there how we can fund this for $26,000 for the safety of the residents of Jefferson City. So first and foremost, I think we all, what's going on in our nation today, that we should always look at how we can strengthen ways for safety in our communities. And I think that this is certainly one that we can shore up and strengthen and at least give the residents the opportunity to know what's going on instead of looking up, it's already happened to them, and then it's too late.
All right, and I can't disagree with you. And almost anything we do as a council to contribute money to public safety will help save lives. I can almost be certain that the more we give to them, and the key is the money and the timing. So I think that's very important that we combine the two. And we'll go to Councilwoman Wiseman.
Thank you. We have a lot of workers who come into the city every day who don't live inside the county boundaries from either Callaway County or Boone County. Is this system going to be set up to be able to communicate with them as well, or are you only going to be able, are we only going to be able to communicate with people who physically live inside the city limits or physically live inside the county?
The system is, the ones that I've looked at are essentially set up to communicate to the people that are within the area that we're communicating to. So if they, working in Jefferson City, decide to subscribe to this service and they're in Jefferson City, then yes, they'll receive it. If they live in Boone County and they subscribe to the system in Boone County, if it's the same system that Boone County is using, then yes, they'll get it. The majority of them are nationwide systems. So it would take a little bit of looking around at the other systems at Boone County, Osage and Callaway. I can tell you, they're all on the same system. So if we went that route, everybody gets it, no matter where they're at, it follows them. Generally speaking, they all have this capability also. If an incident is isolated to a certain area of the community, we can draw a radius around that and it'll only communicate to the people within that radius, so you're not bothering people across, you know, the city. So it's very configurable and there are a lot of capabilities to it.
So is that typically tied into like your iPhone with the location services? Is that what basically you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Branch?
What about somebody that maybe doesn't have a cell phone or a computer or Wi-Fi or an internet hookup?
The systems that I've looked at also will, you can either do a recorded voice message that will go to a home phone, it'll go out to an email address, it will go out to via Facebook, Twitter, any social media we've got, and it could also be set up to broadcast directly to the media and deliver those media releases that we generally do that takes more time. So if you think about it from a time-saving perspective, if we were to try to do each one of these events individually, do a media release, get on our Facebook page, get on our Twitter page, and send out a text notification, all of that, the systems that I looked at do that all at once, and you just got to configure the system to do so.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
In what was, can you rephrase what that motion was, how, what's being paid for?
Oh, you didn't ask me that. You asked me if there were motions to approve it.
Oh, no, that's, I'm sorry, it wasn't very clear to you.
I should have jumped on it like, yeah, okay.
I tried to be clear, I'm sure it's out there, but what I was trying to say is, is there an offset, I wish life was that easy, but is there an offset?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, I do have an offset. And one of the ways I plan on getting to the $26,000, when I look through our budget book, and I allow Ms. Gail the opportunity to talk more about the part-time position because part of my $26,000 is to not fund the $4,018.36 that is going for the part-time position in HR. So that is $4,018.36. And then on the other part, to come up with the $21,981.64, I am looking on page, page 219, and I do have a question in regards to that as well. With the capital improvement, ongoing infrastructure, facility needs, and I guess I have a question in regards to how did we come up with the amount of $300,000? Was that something that we just took a snapshot look at, or how did we arrive at that $300,000? And with that, I would like to...
Point of order, before we have discussion, we need to firm up the motion and then have a second. So the motion was to add the $4,000 plus, try to find the rest of the money out of the $300,000.
That is correct.
And is there a second? All right, there's a move and second, and now there's discussion.
Okay, okay. So the $4,018.36 from HR assistant, and then the $300,000 for the ongoing infrastructure facility needs, I just want to know how do we come up with the $300,000 number? And is, should it be more, should it be less? I'm just wondering how we came up with that number, so. So I don't know who wants to go first, but.
Sure, I can, can I?
Go ahead.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
So this position, this is our part-time position, this position...
It's an existing position.
Yeah, this is not any kind of an additional, the position was hired to work 20 hours a week, and, but we have not had the funding in the budget to work the full amount of hours that we want it to work. So it's only, it has been limited. We've had to watch the hours that she works and cut her back at different times during the year. So this is only asking to fund the position at the amount of hours that we would like that person to work. And that's where the person worked originally. It's just that as wages went up and things like that, the funding never went up for the position, it always stayed flat.
Councilman Graham?
So is the position for 15, based off of 15 hours or 20 hours, I just heard you say?
Well, we would like for it to work 20 hours a week. We actually have had a change in the position recently. A person who was in the position for, I don't know, 10 years or something like that, did leave to take a full-time position. She was working 15 hours a week and, but we did not have the full funding to work 15 hours towards the end of her employment. We have replaced that person now, we've replaced them at a lower salary, hourly salary, and our goal then was for this person to be able to work 20 hours a week with this funding.
So is this the person that we had talked about that was going to be doing stuff with the insurance side?
No, this is our wellness coordinator, this is Jennifer Winkle, who was here the other day. She does all of our wellness stuff, she does a lot of different programming for the employees. She also helps a lot with the online recruiting, our applicant tracking platform.
So how many people are in your office, in your department now, in HR department?
There is a total, including myself, there's three full-time employees and then this one part-time position.
Three full-time and one part-time?
Yeah.
Okay.
And benchmarking, and I know I've said this numerous times, and I know you guys have seen it numerous times, but benchmarking, we should have five full-time employees in our department for the number of employees that we have. And if you benchmark us compared to Columbia, compared to Joplin, they have the five, you know, we have three and a half compared to their five. Now Columbia actually has 15, but they're three times our size, so ratio speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on the 300, it was, 300,000 was an exercise where staff got together and they, with Britt and Matt certainly, got together and developed what, an estimate of the major things, roof, HVAC, those kinds of things. And so it's an estimate, and I think we divided that over a period, number of years and just came up with, you know, try to keep that as a steady funding amount over the number of years. And then some years, we may not need as much, some years we may need more, but as that fund is developed, then we'd have the money there to be able to spend as those amounts came in.
Thank you so very much for your answer. And I know we're not going to talk about it tonight, Mr. Chair, you've already made that clear, but I still want to state it. How we would get back to that $300,000 that staff had sat down and came up with, I think that we could look at it at the end with our fund balance that's sitting well over 17% to put back $21,981.64. I know you don't want to talk about it tonight, but I'm putting it out there so the rest of the council members will know how we can get back to that $300,000. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? The only thing that I have is I think this is a, would be a very worthwhile thing to do. Monetarily, I'm not so sure that we can afford to do it right now. I would like to be able to see what Chief can do, or Captain Willie can do, to pursue other county offices and see if we can maybe have them fund part of it, since it will be helping out not just Jefferson City, but the entire county. And I prefer to see the entire county, a little bit more organization, kind of get their opinion, whether they can contribute or not before we go ahead, because why would they want to contribute if we're just going to give it to them for free? You know, we're just going to go ahead and do it now. So that's my opinion, but I'm willing to take any other questions or comments, any follow-up? Councilman Hussey?
I would just make one comment that throughout the entire police department budget, there were a number of pink sheet items submitted, and it's one of those departments that received a lot of those to be funded, but clearly Steve felt and the mayor felt that, I mean, I just looked at page 77, there's 11 funded items, that clearly these items ranked higher than potentially the service being offered. Not to take away from the notification system, but it seems apparent to me that the replacement of some vehicles, funding that officer position, the information manager, and training and education needs took priority. And just because maybe it doesn't get funded this year, it could be something to come back to next year when some of these other needs are now taken care of and it might rank in priority. But I feel like when it comes to the overall police department and public safety, you know, there have been a number of pink sheet items that have been funded that I would suspect that a lot of us agree are maybe higher priorities and immediate needs to the department. And so I feel comfortable, I think, with staff's recommendation and the mayor's recommendation within this department. And I'd like your suggestion of continuing to explore funding options throughout the year.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, and...
Thank you, and you're right, Councilman Hussey, the fact that I did not include that as a funded item in the budget, doesn't mean that I was unsupportive, because I absolutely support this notification system, but it sounds like there's still perhaps some work to be done, so I'm hoping maybe, as time progresses, that there's a lot of options that they're looking at, and finding the right one, and other options such as whether there's other entities, the county or not, and, and just finding the best and the right system. So, I think that's what the police department is working towards, and we need to support them in that, but just finding the right timing, I think, will be the key. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments, questions? Councilman Graham?
This last comment, out of the 11 items that you stated, Councilman Hussey, as I look at those items that were funded, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of those were in the form of some type of, 8 was in some, some form type of a vehicle. And so, the other 3 were dealing with personnel. So, $26,000 that, I think that can possibly help save lives, certainly needs to be brought to the top, and I'm strongly supportive of this.
Councilman Hussey?
My recommendation would be then to prioritize where you think it falls on that list of 11, what would you take out of there? If the argument is that this notification system is a higher priority than one of those, that would be my suggestion.
Well, I think I just came up with how we fund the $26,000, and it, I don't, so that's what I was asked to do, so that's, that's what I did. So, I got us how we got to the $26,000. So, I guess the next question is, do you approve of it or not, is the next question? I got us to the $26,000.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Graham. Any other questions or comments? At this time, I believe we are ready to vote, and I believe the motion is to take the $26,000 out of the $300,000 in the continuing infrastructure facility needs, and $4,000, I believe, from the part-time, is that correct?
It was $4,018.36 from the part-time HR assistant, and $21,981.64 in the capital.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll vote. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
No.
Hussey?
No.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Wiseman?
No.
Five no, four yes.
Five to four, motion fails. We'll move on, actually, we're gonna move back up to the previous item. If Councilman Hussey would like to speak, and that was, where is that at? That was on the internship program, did you wanna comment on it?
Well, I walked in and people assumed that I wanted to, this was not my original motion, I'm supportive of the item on there, but this is Councilman Mahalovich is...
Right. That, I'm not expecting it to do it, they just asked me if...
I haven't discussed with him yet if he had an offset in mind, or, I don't, and I wasn't at the meeting that this even got put on, the parking lot, so I'm not certain. Did he have an offset in mind?
He did not let me know the offset, he had, I think he had tried at one time to offset it, and did not go through at the last meeting, and then this time, I don't believe there is an offset that I know of.
Well, I would say that I was not prepared to be the one to make the offset tonight.
That's fine.
Thanks, thanks, Councilman Wiseman, are we gonna take a selfie about it now?
All right.
But I do think it's a valuable program, and I think that the internship program is flexible in the sense that that fully funds it, you could half-fund it for 14,000 or something like that, too, so, I think it's worthy to explore. I didn't come prepared, 'cause I, it's not my initial motion.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, we'll move on. We'll move on to item number 3, which is the Hyde Park Training Tower, $487,500. Councilwoman Wiseman?
At this time, after some discussion, I move to withdraw this from the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to the, the last item on the sheet, which is...
Do we need a second or a vote on that, or no?
Well, what we might do at the very end is, is move, put them all on the, as a motion, we have to, we have to do it for all of them, a motion for all of them. We can take them up individually, too, but...
We need a second, or?
Um, there we go. I think that is, there's not a motion at this time, that will be a motion, unless, would you like to make that a motion, go ahead and remove it as a motion?
You want me to move?
If, if you would like to move it as a motion to take it off, we would need a motion to take it off, or we can combine it later with the other ones, either which way.
How about we just combine it later?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll move on to the street worker, additional street worker, and if there's any offsets, we would be love to hear them. Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you. This was a position that was in the budget last year, in fact, there were two that weren't funded, and this year, it is in the budget to fund one, but because of the condition of our roads and our stormwater, I thought it was important that we add the second one also, due to the workload, and I know that's one of the top complaints that I always hear from people, is the road in the stormwater. So, I wanted to look within the department, that this would occur, I, you know, I didn't wanna rob from another department, 'cause every department is very important. So, in looking at the pink sheets, and the priority of the pink sheets, the last item for Public Works was the tandem dump truck and plow blade for 150,000. And, I wondered, you know, with that being a number eight priority, if, and I would like to add, ask the input of the director that's here, if he would be agreeable to taking that out of the funded position, or budget, and allowing for another street worker, which then would increase the workload, and we would get more streets paved and fixed, which he would also need more materials to do that, so the remainder of that 150, from the 42,885 that's taken out for the position, there would be 107,115 left over, and that could go towards his, his budget for street materials. So, do you have any comments?
I'd like to accept that as a motion, if that's possible.
Yes, I make that motion.
I'll second that.
The move is seconded, now we have discussion, would you like to have Director Matt Marash speak on that?
Yes, please, if, if you would like.
Certainly. And as you indicated, a street worker was our, in our priority list, in the original budget, we had 1 through 8 in the street division, and number 1 was the 2 workers, and we felt the reason we asked for 2, is that's the ones we had lost, but it's also, we kinda work in small crews, and that would give us one more crew back, instead of an odd number. And so, that is the number 1, and then, you're right, number, the number 8 priority was the tandem dump truck, it is quite old, however, it would be our lowest priority in that list, so I just fall back to the priority we'd already submitted, and, and it would be agreeable. And you are correct, several years ago, our street material money was up quite a bit, and the council kinda, almost annually, kinda tried to put more in it, just so we would do more in-house projects, things like that, and so, over the last several years, we've kinda held it, you know, basically, what we could spend, more or less, so. So, I would say adding that other crew does get you more work done internally, it's good, it's good money, I feel like, for the personnel, to get the work out on the street, the, and if you, and we talked about our performance measures briefly in the first go-around, but if you look at the performance measures from a couple of years back, you can even tell by just looking at our square yards of pavement replaced, that has fallen off considerably in the last couple of years, so. So, you know, so we kinda flip back between storm drains and pavement repair now, and so hopefully, we'd be able to get more done, and, and really, the budget and the shape it's in now, and getting the more equipment replaced better, kinda getting back in line with that equipment program like we once had, about 10 years ago, the council, you know, did the same thing, or a little longer than that, actually, and so we were able to actually do more in-house projects, like small storm drains, things like that, and so having the workers and the material money together, I think would be helpful, and get us kinda back to once where we were, so. And I think, you know, storms let, we've had recently kind of helped highlight the issue until it rains, nobody cares about the storm drains, but when it rains, then we get a lot of, a lot of calls about those, and our condition of our streets is, is something that needs attention.
You know, I'm not so sure you answered the question directly, as far as taking the, oh, you said, the truck off?
Yeah.
Oh, you did, okay.
I indicated that, that was our lowest priority in our list, and so, the workers were the highest priority, and so, you know, our equipment, you know, this is an old truck, but, you know, it's not parked and not running, so, you know, we have mechanics, and they'll continue to keep it running, unless it comes up a high maintenance item, you know, we may, we may wanna park it, but, but as now, it's still running, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Hussey?
Just for clarity's sake, what is, what is the motion specifically? 'Cause I, the parking lot shows funding the staff position, but conversation said, potentially taking the remainder of that 150,000 and doing something with it, but I, it's not captured just yet, is it, in this motion, or is it still?
I, I think the intent, if I may, it was to just offset 42,000 against that amount.
Yes, to offset for the position, but however, within that department, there would be the leftover, and because of the work that's created by having a full pair of street workers, they would need more street materials available to them, since we're not hiring outside of the city, and so that remainder, 107, go towards the street materials.
Oh, okay. All right.
But I don't know if I can do that, since I didn't put street materials on the department.
Sure, that's fine. Okay, I guess, my only issue with that particular, I think we do need another street worker, but we are offsetting an ongoing expense with a one-time expense, or one-time, getting rid of a one-time expense, which would be the truck, so we would be able to afford it for one year, so would we wanna on, to remove the truck every year, or is this, is this just for a year, or is this ongoing, we'll just find the money somewhere else the next year? That's, that's my only issue with it, is 'cause it's not an ongoing amount of money, it's just a one-time fund. So, any thoughts on that?
Could you help us with that?
Yeah, I, I think it's probably the latter, I mean, you're just building in an ongoing expense, so, I mean, that's, every year, just, that, like all the other positions, is just a hunk of money that's not gonna be there for any other purposes, it's for those purposes that you designated, so. And then, if you do, obviously, the remainder amount, if it goes towards materials, then that's something that we kinda look at every year and adjust accordingly.
I try to muddy things up here just a little bit. In the past, it's come to my attention that we haul the millings, and it's, we pay about 70, 80,000 dollars a year through the sales tax, to hire, hire that out, but if we had an extra guy, we wouldn't have to do that. Could you speak on that?
Uh, yeah, in the past, we had hauled the millings, I guess it could be done again, depending on your equipment, it is, we do pay more overtime, though, 'cause that's, a lot of roads are done at nighttime, the main routes. You know, it'd be my preference not to do that, actually, it was kind of an odd deal when I came to work here, most cities don't do that, they, you know, 'cause now you're, you're mixing a different work crew with a contractor's work crew, and, and the problem with that is, if they decide to go home, then I've called all my people in, it just got, now, not that we can't do it, but, and we have done in this community for some time, but we don't do it anymore with less people and, and things, but I'd prefer just to keep them busy on our streets, and keep, keep that expense through the overlay, like we have been for the last several years. It's my preference.
I think if you approve another worker, it's just up to the director to use that worker as most efficiently as they can.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, looks like we're ready to vote, and, could you read that motion, please?
Yes, the motion was to remove the, the dump truck from the pink sheets, and fund 42,885 dollars for the extra street worker, and the remaining balance, between that amount and the dump truck, of 107,115 dollars would go towards more street materials.
All right, we are ready to vote, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Nay.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Prather?
Nay.
Schreiber?
Nay.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Six yes, three no.
Six yes, three no?
Yes.
It passes. All right, well, I believe that's all we have on the parking lot.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
The internship program of 27,558, you wanna keep it on the parking lot for another meeting to, to propose an offset?
No, we're gonna request a motion to remove all those unfunded items at the end of this meeting off of the parking lot, and then, if they wish to bring it back on again, they, they're more than welcome to, that'll just create another, another meeting for us, which is fine, if that's what we wish to do. Okay. At this time, do we have a motion to remove the unfunded items from the parking lot?
So moved.
So, moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. At this time, we have a balanced budget, I believe, and we are, the floor is open to any new motions, and if we bring them up, we either have a funding option tonight to offset it, or we can, I believe our next meeting is scheduled to be when?
Monday.
Monday. So...
Wow.
And that's, like I said, I'm not trying to talk you into it or out of it, that's up to everybody here, so...
You don't have to, we have one, we've got a work session Tuesday night, so you can do the picture, if there, I'm just saying, if there was a meeting Monday night. I mean, don't have the meeting just because of the picture.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna ask this, is there any motions out there to add things to the parking lot? Councilman Costalis?
Yes, I have a motion, I'd like to add to the parking lot on the police animal control, a part-time customer service specialist at 10,400, this is gonna be a multiple part, I'm gonna make everything balanced out. I'd also like to add the part-time customer service specialist adoption counselor, also at 10,400, and the offset would be 800 dollars from vet services within that, it's on page 100, and the other 20,000 would be from the non-depart, non-departmental, from MSP.
Okay, is there a second? Could you please repeat the motion?
Fund two part-time customer service specialists for the animal control shelter, and that would total 20,800, that's, they're on pages 103 and 104. And then, on page 100, they have vet services there, budgeted for 5,600, reduce that to 4,800, that would give 800 dollars, and then the other 20,000 come from, removing the money from MSP.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion dies. We'll move on to any other motions? Any comments? Well... Mr. Cole, do you have anything?
No, no.
Ms. Miller?
No.
All right. All right. Well, looks like we're here with a balanced budget. If there's no more motions, we can always adjourn. So moved. It's moved and seconded to adjourn. All those a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Means we come back Monday.
Passes.
I don't know.
That's true.
We have to meet again, Matt.
Well, we can... In a second, all those a favor, say aye. All right.
Miss Clayton, how's the webcast going?
Okay. Are we on air?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good. All right. To bring everybody back up, we want, it was requested, we go ahead and go back into our meeting to move this budget on to the council, and it's moved and seconded, and I believe everybody said aye, so we are going to ask for a motion.
Well, I would move that we send the budget as-is on to the full council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Now, just wanted to comment that the budget's never over until we voted at the second meeting of the council. So, if something comes up to where you feel a need to change things, that's why we're here, to discuss. So, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Motion passes, and we'll move this on to the, budget on to the council. Any other motions?
Move the adjourn.
Oh...
So, does that mean we don't have a meeting Monday?
That is correct. We do not have a meeting on Monday.
We do a picture on Tuesday.
We'll figure it out.
That was the only day that was left that everybody would be...
We'll figure it out.
Well, actually, Tuesday is a work session. We'll have to check with Councilman Mahalovich to make sure, but...
We'll figure it out. We will figure it out.
All right, well, so at this time, there's a motion on the floor to...
We'll figure it out.
To adjourn. Has anybody seconded that motion? Okay, good. Move the seconded. All those a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. House.